2017 council meeting in order. We have a group of Boy Scouts here today from Troop 3507, from the First Christian Church. Den leader is Jennifer Mathias. And if I ask the young gentleman to come to the microphone up front there, the right microphone, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Anytime you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good job.
Can you get in?
Got a big guy?
Struggling over here.
Little clerk, please call the roll.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colasar.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of November 13, 2017, as prepared and submitted by the clerk, be approved.
Second. Discussion on the reading of the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee prior to the council meeting this evening, and will meet again for the last time this year, two weeks from now. The Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Colasar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have a meeting scheduled at this point. We did talk about adding some new police cruisers and a detective car and finance earlier, but besides that, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, and I expect to schedule a meeting sometime in January to talk about the extended term limits discussion that I sent in.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this evening, but I am planning on holding a Streets and Sidewalks meeting prior to, if it's okay with everybody, prior to our Finance and Council meeting, the second meeting of the month of January, to discuss ongoing and upcoming projects and the request from Mr. Colasar for the extension of sidewalks to several areas of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Hilberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report. No meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, and I expect to schedule a meeting sometime in January to talk about the extended term limits discussion that I sent in.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, and I expect to schedule a meeting sometime in January to talk about the extended term limits discussion that I sent in.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, and I expect to schedule a meeting sometime in January to talk about the extended term limits discussion that I sent in.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Chief Kinney, Police Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a quick personnel update I'd like to give to you. On November 2, Sergeant Brian Wagner was promoted to the position of Sergeant. He has assumed command of the weekend day shift. We also offered a job to Omar Vasquez. He was sworn in, and he has started his position in FTO. He'll be training for the next 12 weeks. He started this past Sunday, and he'll be on night shift for three weeks, and he'll move on to a different FTO for another three weeks, another FTO for that three weeks, and then finish with his original FTO for three weeks after that. We also participated in the candlelight walk for all three days of it. We had no issues, no problems. I'd like to thank our specials unit. They were out all three days, including Saturday in the rain, directing traffic, as well as our citizens' police academy alumni association members. They also assisted in and around the square for the entire event. I have nothing further, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a short report, just a couple items. I wanted to remind seniors in the community that you may already be qualified for a free membership in Silver Sneakers programming at the Medina Rec through our Tivity Health Program. This is formerly known as our Healthways Program. We have over 2,000 seniors already registered for this program, and there are still a lot more eligible in the county. To see if you are eligible, call our front desk at 3307-216900. We're stopping at the rec, and we can look it up just with your name and birth date in less than a minute. The last note, the last rec advisory committee meeting of the year will be Thursday, December 21, at 7:30 a.m. at the rec center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. The building department is extremely busy for this time of the year. There are currently, under some phase of construction, 12 large commercial and industrial projects. These projects consist of eight new buildings and four additions to existing buildings. The construction costs for these projects range from $1 up to $15 million. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you. Couple of quick updates. ODOT's US 42 Project, North Court Street, north of Reagan Parkway, it is essentially complete. There is some lighting and whatnot that'll have to occur, but other than that, the bulk of the work is complete. South of Reagan, they are still installing the storm sewer, kind of near Highland. That will continue. The storm sewer work is expected to be done sometime in early January. At that point, the project will essentially take the winter off, and they'll be back in March to finish that entire southern section. Our sidewalk repair program is nearly complete. Our contractor should finish this week. We've had several inquiries about the invoices to property owners. Those will be distributed in January. North Harmony Bridge is expected to open later this week if everything goes well. The West Smith Bridge, that will not open until mid-December. It's the target date. And also, I do have an update about our South Prospect Street waterline project. I think I'll address that when the ordinance is discussed later in the meeting.
Thank you. Confirmation of mayor's appointments, we have a few. For the Uptown Park Advisory Committee, we have Melanie Caston Kraus for a term expiring 12/31/20, Mike Larrabee for a term expiring 12/31/20, and Roger Smalley for a term expiring 12/31/20.
Move to confirm the mayor's appointment for Uptown Park Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
And for the Shade Tree Commission, we have Dale Weingant for a term expiring 12/31/21.
Move to confirm the mayor's appointment for Shade Tree Commission.
Second.
Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
And for the Economic Development Committee, for Julie McNabb for a term expiring 12/31/21.
Move to confirm the mayor's appointment for Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Discussion? Clerk please call the roll.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Notices, communications, petitions, there's none unfinished business, there's none introduction of visitors. Members of the public who have admitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public who will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting is determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Nobody? Okay. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 167-17, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Medical Mutual of Ohio for health care insurance for the employees of the city of Medina.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, our insurance broker, Shulley Advisors, has been working diligently for the last probably 90 days, negotiating with United Healthcare, who has provided health care insurance for us, and Medical Mutual, and due in part to the wellness initiative that the city and the schools do in collaboration with Medina Hospital, as well as an improved claims history. We saw no increase this past year over the 2016 rate, and then in 2018, Medical Mutual came in at greater than 7% less than what we paid in 2016 and 2017, which is a savings of the city of greater than $150,000. So, we respectfully ask council to approve the move to Medical Mutual. The reason for the emergency clause is we need the month of December to get the new plans out to the employees, to get the insurance cards issued, and be squared away to go January 1. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think on behalf of council, I can say we like the effort and appreciate the effort of the administration and of our, I guess, health care broker to achieve these rates, and through the efforts of Healthy Medina, getting a better prospect of our health of the city of Medina as a whole. And I think it's very beneficial that we save that kind of money for the city, and taxpayers should definitely be proud of that. Is there anybody else that wishes to discuss this item?
Mr. President.
Mr. Colasar?
I want to make a brief comment. I also want to commend the administration on the health of Medina Initiative, and, you know, I do want to thank United Healthcare that came in when we were in a tough time to take over our insurance, and, you know, we make tough decisions here, and, you know, these health cares, 2.1 million for our combined, for our city and employees, but, I mean, with the revised plan, United Healthcare actually came back with a renewal of roughly a little over $44,000, still more than the Medical Mutual, so I still think it's a significant saving, so I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
of roughly a little over 44,000, still more than the Medical Mutual. So, I still think it's a significant saving, so I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 167-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 168-17, an ordinance amending Section 3107 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the job description for the building and properties custodian position.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Gladys? Oh, is that not you? Who is this?
I'll take this.
All right, Mayor.
So...
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah. The, this position, we had a, we had a position at City Hall for a building and properties custodian position. That, that position was eliminated, and the job description went along with it. And it was just recently determined through civil service that there was still a position with the same job description and the same pay rate at the municipal court. So, we need to reinstate that job description so that we can advertise for a retiring person over at the court.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Ordinance 168-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 169-17, an ordinance amending Section 3105 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Police Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mayor Hamwell?
Yes, sir. This ordinance, what we found is in Section 3105 of the Salary and Benefits Code, is all of the department heads appointed by the mayor were also confirmed by the council, with the exception of the police chief. And with our recent promotion of Chief Kinney, it was determined that that one missed that language of the chief being confirmed by council. The administration and myself feel it's very important that the mayor and the council be on the same page for a position of this importance. And this is simply going to make the police chief position the same approvals with council confirmation as all of the other department heads.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 169-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 170-17, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to solicit requests for proposals, RFPs, for drug screening and associated professional services for the employees of the city of Medina.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Annually, we go back out to accept quotes to get the best price for the city for our drug-free workplace, both training, testing. And we need to do this as quickly as possible because our current contract runs out December 31st. This is one of those things that, as my new administrative assistant is becoming accustomed to all the different duties of the office, it was something that we just realized here shortly ago, and have a short timeframe to get the quotes accepted and reviewed and in place by January 1st, therefore the emergency clause.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 170-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 171-17, an ordinance authorizing expenditure of $75,000 to various vendors and contractors for the emergency transfer of water service laterals on South Prospect Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As discussed earlier, this project consists of the transfer of several water service laterals on South Prospect Street from an old 4-inch water line to a newer 8-inch water line. As an update, we started this project last Monday. There are a total of 45 customers on South Prospect. Of those 45, 31 were on the old 4-inch and needed to be transferred over. As of this afternoon, 21 of the 31 have already been transferred. There's 10 more to go. We expect the project to be done later this week. I would also note that one of our concerns was that some of our customers might have old galvanized water lines up to their houses. We feared there'd be a lot more, but our, right now, it looks like there's only five that have galvanized water lines between our main and their house. Most of those, if not all of them, will be transferring that to copper. So, in the end, it'll be a very nice public improvement. We asked for the emergency clause because we wanted to get this done as quickly as possible due to some problems with discolored water that we've been facing for a while. We did estimate the cost at $75,000. At the moment, across our fingers, I don't think we're going to be near that much, but we'll know more by the end of this week.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 171-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 172-17, an ordinance authorizing the increase of the expenditure to Lake County Sewer Co. to $55,000 for the street department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Pat?
Thank you. I received these comments from Service Director Nino Pacoli. And he mentions increasing the PO to Lake County Sewer Company from $25,000 to $55,000 is necessary. The city's street department and the contractor were working together in an effort to repair numerous storm sewer issues throughout the city. He notes that to date, approximately 1,533 feet of various sized storm sewer pipes have been grounded. Passing this ordinance will allow the street department to continue that effort with many pipes needing attention.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of ordinance.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Ordinance 172-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 173-17, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the property owner of Medina County, Medina City Lot Number 5934 to share in the cost to install sidewalk abutting the property on Foundry Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved that we added it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. Sometime last year, council at committee level approved and authorized us to do a project to install sidewalk on Foundry Street between where it ends at the apartments on the north side of the street, or the northern part of the street, down towards Bronson. We completed part of that with our reconstruction project of Foundry. We started to pull together the effort to complete the rest of that, which is about 1,300 foot of sidewalk. We came to find out that one of the large property owners in that section is planning to do a project in the relatively near future to develop that property. And it occurred to us that, at that time, we would require them to install these sidewalks. So, we met with these property owners, the mayor and I, and came to an agreement which will allow us to get these sidewalks done as soon as possible, weather permitting, and also save both of us money. They've agreed to share 50% of the cost for the sidewalk in their, along their frontage. That's what that contract is for.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of emergency clause.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Ordinance 173-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 174-17, an ordinance amending ordinance number 167-16, passed December 12th, 2016, amendments to the 2017 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you'll note, we discussed in finance, most of these are donations that we've received. And in order to spend the money that we've received in donations, we have to have it appropriated by the council. And then the last one, the big one, is the court's case management system, which comes from court funds.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Ordinance 173-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 174-17, an ordinance amending ordinance number 167-16, passed December 12th, 2016, amendments to the 2017 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Durham. Thank you, Mr. President. As you'll note, we discussed in finance, most of these are donations that we've received. And in order to spend the money that we've received in donations, we have to have it appropriated by the council. And then the last one, the big one, is the court's case management system, which comes from court funds.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
And will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.